At Council Plus Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, the United Republic of 46 states, the one nation under God, indivisible and veritable and just as a God.
I'd like to call a meeting to order and make sure all council members are here. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. My apple proclamation tonight, on May 17 through the 23rd is National Public Works Week. City Council Plus Iowa Office of the Mayor Proclamation, whereas public works infrastructure, facilities and services are vital importance to the health, safety and well-being of the citizens of Council Plus, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works employees from the city and the private sector, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewages and refuse disposal systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children to gain knowledge of and to maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform, and whereas the year 2015 marks the 55th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, therefore I, Matthew J. Walsh, Mayor of the City Council Plus, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through May 23, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the City of Council Plus, Iowa, and urge each and every citizen to pay tribute to the public works professionals and to recognize the contribution which public works officials make every day to our health, safety and comfort and quality of life. The signature of the City Council Plus affects this 18th day of May in the year 2015. And then seeing from the public works. I would also like to point out, which I think you'll read in favor tomorrow, our Public Works Director, Greg Reader, today received an award as one of the top 10 Public Works Officials by the American Public Works Association. Now that's in the country, and I think in 50 years, they've given a little over 10 a year, so there's, I think they said 535 maybe, Public Works Officials that have received that award in the last 50 years. So to have one of our own recognized as one of this year's top 10 officials throughout the United States is quite an honor, and congratulations, Greg. All right, we'll go to the public hearings. This is a time, place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6230, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.040 by rezoning the properties located at 229 and 231 12th Avenue. And legally described as being the east half of the west half of Blocks 6, comma Block 7, comma Park Edition, from C Commercial District to R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District as defined in Chapter 15.10. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve ordinance 6230.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 5B, this is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6231, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.040 by repealing the C2 Commercial District contract zoning approved by ordinance number 5948, later amended by ordinance 6176 and 6204. On property legally described as Lot 16 and parts of Lot 17 and 18, Glengarry Edition, lying west of the ditch except the highway right-of-way, and rezoning said property to C2 Commercial District as defined in Chapter 15.15, is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council in regards to this matter? If you would please step to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Cody Forsdorf, 19075 Perry Road here in Council Plus. I own the property at 2614 and 2606 that are attempting to rezone. If the, not sure, this is our first time through the process, but if the council approves the rezoning, is it possible to have the third period wait?
Typically, if nobody objects, that's a consideration that is typically granted. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Forsdorf?
Is there a reason why we need to rush this?
I just wanted to get the construction process started. We own the property, we already built the property right next door, just waiting for that.
No other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishes to address the council? Is there a motion by the council?
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion to wait third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is a time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-121 granting final plat approval for a seven-block subdivision, to be known as Rivers Edge subdivision, being a part of Government Lot 3 of the southwest quarter of Section 28-75-44, and part of Government Lot 1 of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 33-75-44, in lots 174 through 182, and lots 194 through 201, twin-city gardens along with the vacated alleys inclusive, and the portion of the north 40th Street lying south of the southerly right-of-way of Avenue B, in the north of the state right-of-way, in north of the state right-of-way, excuse me, so. Is there proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council relative to Resolution 15-121? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
For those at home, that's a four to one vote. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance is amending Title IX Traffic. A1, Ordinance 6236, amending Chapter 9.12 Traffic by amending Section 9.12.010 and repealing Section 9.12.150, and A2, Ordinance 6237, amending Chapter 9.09 Motorized Scooters, Electrified Bicycles and Other Personal Transport Vehicles by amending Section 9.09.030.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 6232, amending Chapter 2.08 Schedule of Fees by amending Section 2.08.020, fees and charges authorized in Title IX.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion?
A little quick on the drive, if I could offer a motion again to subray ordinance 6233 and 6234 for a vote and then come back to consideration of the 6232.
She just did that.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, we are only voting on one A this time. So discussion on, we have a motion, is there a discussion on?
Well, just a reminder to everyone that we're not actually raising the fees tonight. They were raised back in 2003. Meters throughout the city were a combination of the new meters, the old meters. The old meters were mechanical meters, were not able to be maintained, they're old, parts unavailable, too expensive, et cetera. So what we're doing is we're cleaning up the ordinance language so that it now matches what is in reality, the meters that are on the streets and in use.
And there's looks and references, I guess what I would say is that, to further clarify that, many years ago, they were about $150 per meter head. The city in 2003 began to change out the old, what I call the crank meters, where you put your coin in and crank it, and then it goes back, and put your coin in, crank it, and it goes back, to the meters that we're more familiar with, where you put your money in and the time automatically comes up on the digital readout. When they changed that to the digital readout, they changed the amount of the fee for parking. The old crank meters did not have the capability of being able to change to that new fee, so we had two different fee structures, one for the digital meters, that you put the coins in, and one for the meters that you had to crank. Now, all those crank meters since 2003 have been replaced, and so as Councilwoman Brannigan said, to clean up the ordinance, we no longer have a crank meter fee, and so we're doing away with that, is what this language does. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And that's a four to one vote.
Ordinance 6233, amending Chapter 9.34 Emergency Snow routes by amending Section 9.34.030 Emergency Snow routes established.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance 6234, amending Chapter 9.88 Speed Regulations by amending Section 9.88.080 Schedule of Close to Streets.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance 6235, amending Chapter 3.08 Fear and Lander Control by amending Section 3.08.045 Exceptions to Section 3.08.040 Careful.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
In spite of standing, the person who had requested this text change has also got an application for a permit to cover the southern area on Friday's dinner, about 1:00 this afternoon, so on his behalf, I'm requesting council consider, going to third consider, going to make a leading third consideration on this. I do understand that not having the written version makes that a little more difficult to justify, but if we've had a chance to look at what was provided to you, you'll see that the changes are not too extensive. They're all contained on Page 2 and on 3, we do restrict the time to have to close down at 10, but if you consider that, that's fine, if not, I think.
Where are they on the agenda? You said they're on, where?
I have to defer to the report.
On your handout that I gave you?
No, we're, we're on the agenda for tonight. No, I thought you meant they were on one of the, I weren't permitted. That's my fault. Nick, can you repeat that? I guess I didn't hear you clearly.
I thought I understood their license, when the expanded area was on the, you didn't remember.
They'll be applied for these licenses.
Okay. They'll be on the next agenda. I'll see if, if anyone remembers.
Okay. Like, I don't see them anymore.
I didn't see them either.
Sorry? So we're okay?
You're fine. And the resolutions, man?
Resolution 15-122, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC with the East Nanawas Sewer Rehab Project based for.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-123, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a water main extension agreement with the Council Plus Water Works in conjunction with the Rivers Edge project.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Four to one. Any reason I do that, people at home ask, they can't tell what the vote is.
Resolution 15-124, approving the Mosquito Creek Number 22C, Number 32 and West Louis Number 35 Drainage District Assessments for 2016.
Motion to approve, second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-125, authorizing the acquisition of 3549 West Broadway.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-126, authorizing the acquisition of 3402 Second Avenue.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-127, authorizing the acquisition of 3414 Second Avenue.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-128, endorsing an application for rice program funds to construct public improvements in Rivers Edge subdivision.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-128, authorizing the purchase of a one-ton aerial platform truck for the traffic division of the Public Works Department.
Motion to approve, second.
Just for clarification, is 129, right?
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 15-130, approving the non-union employee wage increase for July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That's four to one.
Resolution 15-131, approving the capital improvement program for the fiscal years of 2015 through 16, and through 2019 and 20.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion?
I just want to say, this is so for folks at home, who might not necessarily know the jargon, that the capital improvement plan is the five-year rolling plan of projects to the hardscapes in a lot of streets, not exclusively streets and sewers, but that's the big one that I can think of, as well as buildings and things of that nature, things that would last longer than a year or two, to say the least. And I want to commend the mayor and the administration for putting together what I believe to be a very good plan, an update to the plan, like I say, that we do every year, particularly the emphasis on infill, that is, building out our existing community and all the wonderful things it has to offer to, it's just a fantastic way to continually renew the city and increase that tax base, as the mayor has mentioned so many times, necessary to help keep taxes reasonable for everyone else already here, so I commend it and I disapprove.
I would echo those comments, I said, this is a tremendous document to put together in terms of complexity and foresight, takes not only a lot of effort to make all the numbers come together on so many different projects, but it also requires a lot of forethought as to the timing of certain types of projects and how they get done and how they fit into the city's budget in the future. And the only thing that concerns me about this CIP, that even though there's a tremendous amount of good planning and good projects contained in here, that the total expenditures on this five-year CIP are about $53 million, larger than they were for the CIP submitted last year, so given the budgetary challenges that we face in the future, I'm concerned about that, that level spending increase.
The plan is a good document and a way for the city to essentially plan for all the expenses that will be coming up, large expenses, one of which that probably accounts for that increase is the levy certification, if I'm not mistaken, and that is a mandated program. So some of the things that we have to spend money on, we have no choice, and as with any plan, it's a fluid document, so things that are in there in a particular order, if you're really following along at home, and I'm not sure that anyone is, but if someone is, you may see a shift within the plan as emergencies arrive and arise, and certain things need to be shifted around with the expenditures in that plan to make sure that the city stays on top of what we need to do. So it's a very complicated plan, a lot of work, and commend the city for, and staff for that.
I'd like to thank you for the comments about the work involved, I mentioned this afternoon, and I'll mention again, that I would like to apologize to this body, it's later, and this typically comes out, that was the result of having the retirement of our previous finance director, some difficulty in replacing that job position, we wanted the finance director to weigh in, we do have a new finance director, he has that time, to do that, I promise you, this won't be as late next year as it is this year. There are some big projects on there, we talk about $53 million and more in spending, one of the projects is a new police station, we got, we're working with a police station that was built in 1978, no longer adequate, that is what is not termed an essential corporate purpose, and what that means is that if we decide to spend that money on that police station, that can't be done without a vote of the people, and so we would be coming back to the people to make our case of why it makes sense to have a police station, a new police station built, and that's about $20 million of that $53 million. Additionally, we have a water treatment plant, and we've all heard of unfunded mandates, the Department of Natural Resources is more than ever looking at processes to make sure that when those waters are expelled back into the waterway, that they don't have chemicals that they don't want in the waterways, that's a $25 million unfunded mandate, and so just those two projects, $45 million, I haven't done the math, but if Councilmember Ringenberg's correct, $53 million, you're looking at $45 million right there, and those two projects that may or may not happen, one will take a vote of the people, one we are working diligently to free up capacity in our water treatment plant so that we don't have to get the DNR's approval, so we'll keep working forward, that's all we can do. And if there's no more comments, if you call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And that's four to one.
Resolution 15-132, approving the Iowa Waste Systems Association 2015 Waste Comprehensive Plan.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Applications, permits and cancellations, 9A, B, C and D.
Motion to approve, 9A, B, C and D, please do.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk, any requests from citizens of the area?
I receive.
Anyone from the audience like to address the council?
I would.
Please step forward to the microphone, and if you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anna Lang, and my address is 2319 Sherwood Drive, Council Plus, Iowa, Part 3. I'm kind of probably out of order, but I heard the possible development in housing and stuff on the old bumpy ground there on 32nd Avenue, I mean on Second Avenue down by 32nd to 34th Street. I wanted to make the city aware of the fact that for years that rock ground had been treated with waste oil, 500 to 1,000 gallons at a time, so that that will need to be taken into consideration when you're doing anything on redeveloping that land. And there's also along 33rd Street, about three-quarters of the way to First Avenue from Second Avenue, is an underground spring. If you get in there wrong, you're going to have a large leakage problem, and that, because we used to have a property adjacent to there, and basically the pollution from bumpy grain, which the Board of Health said they had to patrol over, the state said they were doing just fine, it was perfectly legal, my daughter's suffering from health problems from bumpy grain, and I just wanted you folks not to be involved with the chemicals that were there until they've been evaluated.
Thank you. And I just would tell you, with any cancellation, my previous career was in banking, and so any development that would be financed by a bank would require what they would call a Phase 1, and typically followed up by a Phase 2 study, which would take pour samples of the ground and analyze it for chemicals, and so if that's the case, if the ground is polluted, it will come out during that testing, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Well, I feel bad about losing my house down in that area, because I couldn't get a loan for redevelopment because of the C2 listing that was on the property there, and being residential in a C2 zone, I couldn't get any funds, and there would not be a waiver granted, because I did go before the city planning department several times to ask her, you know, if I filed money, would I get a waiver approved, and they said they hadn't been a waiver approved, nor would mine be, so I don't want to live there.
Yeah, it was, but we would call in city parlance a non-conforming zoning, and so it was a residential in a commercial zone there, and so that's why they...
And now you're talking about lifting it, so it makes me feel ironic that 20 years ago, if Ben Smith had been great, me, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council, I heard from the audience like to address the council? Anyone from the council?
Other business, did you want to, do we need to direct the zoning?
If you'd like the, that request from Mr. Crowell, which can be reviewed by staff, the appropriate partisan that is the zoning ordinance would be to ask him for comment on the request.
Okay. Could they do that?
Yeah, at least three.
Yes. Four of us, five of us, huh?
Five. Or there's a whole, there's five.
And then my second comment is to the, to all the people, the volunteers, the board of directors, celebrate Council Plus. Two weeks ago, I said, you know, cross my fingers that the weather would hold, it did not, but you can't, you can't control that, but I think it's fine with the weather, it was a, it seemed from my viewpoint to be a pretty good event, on par with all the previous years, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, and it's completely done by a nonprofit board and a group of volunteers, and so you guys did a great job, and thank you very much for your commitment to putting it on year after year, a great event to showcase and celebrate our great city of Council Plus.
I got a lot of very complimentary comments.
Also, Loess Fest, we have a banner here, I imagine, it won't be able to be seen, it's at too extreme of an angle for those folks at home, but if you go to loessfest.com, you can read the fantastic lineup that Parks and Director Larry Foster have put together, starting with the band Chicago this weekend, going all through the following weekend, including the symphony of fireworks and all sorts of fantastic things, free events for a public to take advantage of. Please do so, please, it's another event, celebrate our fantastic community, and it's a great thing put together by the city in conjunction with a lot of businesses and individuals who put it on at no expense to the general taxpayer.
And since we have a little time, I'm going to go through the listing of events. Saturday, May twenty-third, is what they're terming Saturday in the park, it's a free concert from the band Chicago, who I believe has had twenty-one number-one hits. Sunday night at eight p.m., and that starts at seven p.m., Sunday night at eight p.m. is Fireworks for Freedom featuring the Omaha Symphony, and it is phenomenal fireworks that show that starts in conjunction with the last song that the symphony does, which is usually a patriotic song that goes well into the night. And then on Tuesday, if you're not familiar with Second City Comedy, they are the Chicago-based comedy troupe that has brought people like Chevy Chase, John Velucchi, many, many, many more of the Saturday Night Live troupe members. If you go to Chicago, you stand in long lines in hopes of getting in, they are a free concert on Tuesday night at seven p.m. Wednesday, May twenty-seventh at nine p.m., because it has to get dark, is movie in the park, Jaws, the fortieth anniversary of Steven Spielberg's Jaws. On Thursday, May twenty-eighth, starting at seven p.m., is what they're calling Throwback Thursday, which is a tribute band that plays Journey songs. And then Friday, Taste of Omaha, will bring their festival over, and Disney Day in the Park is Friday, starting at five p.m., so a great family entertainment. And then on Saturday, there's Spike the Bluffs, Golf Fest, and then at seven p.m. at night, Mini Mahaha, which is an indie music festival, so many great sponsors, please check that loessfest.com. These people have contributed, in some cases, tens of thousands of dollars to bring this free event to their customers and the residents of the city of Council Plus, so enjoy what plans to be a great week.
And don't be worried watching the movie Jaws right next to a bond of water. I think it'll be all right.
But don't dip your toes in... All right, thank you, have a great one. We are here.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe, is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. April twenty-fifth, the Omaha Roller Girls take on the North Star Roller Girls in roller derby action. Then May sixteenth, they're back at the MAC for sponsor appreciation night. The MAC offers free parking for all events, including those in the convention center. May twenty-ninth through the thirty-first, OkamaCon comes to Council Plus. Then July tenth and eleventh, enjoy all things British, movies, books, and more at British Fest two thousand and fifteen. Tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.